Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. I will ask our Girl Scouts in the room, please come forward. They will be leading us in the pledge today. And please remain standing after the pledge. Got our flag right over.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and always.
It always sounds so much better when we have the youth helping us out. Please remain standing, but all the scouts, I'll let you go back to your stand in front of your seats there. We're going to do a moment of silence for another Madisonian we lost in the past week. We've often recognized those who have left their impact on Madison, and this is for someone really has left his impact on Madisonians. Starting on the football field through his coaching and by bringing out the best of every player, Coach Monica, or just coach as so many called him, taught lifelong skills, served as a mentor for years after the players graduated, many, excuse me, many who have become very successful in their business lives, and they trace it all back to on the field with Coach Monica. Coach Ted Monica, lifelong, longtime Madison resident, died in his home on March 3rd, surrounded by his family, he was 90. He was born and raised in East Orange, born on May 5th, went on to earn his undergraduate degree from Panzer College, which is now Montclair State, and a master's degree in educational administration. He is part of our greatest generations, having served our armed services in the Marine Corps during the height of the Korean War. He earned his Purple Heart in 1953. In 1954, returned from the war, accepted his first position as assistant coach with Jonathan Dayton Regional High School in Springfield, where he met the love of his life, the late Pascalina Lee Monica, also known as Lee Bird, and they got married on June 26th in 1954. In 1955, he was offered the position of physical education teacher and head football coach by the Madison Board of Education, and eventually served as director of athletics for many years. He and his wife Lee relocated to Madison on Britton Street with their young family, and eventually moved to Westerly Avenue, which has remained a family home to now. He created a tradition of excellence and put Madison on the map for high school football. It's been said, "Coach took mediocre athletes and turned them into champions." Under his guidance, he won nine state championships, 38-game winning streak. The high school football program and many other conference records still stand throughout the years. At one point, Coach Monica was named the all-time winningest coach in New Jersey. Through the 60s, under the guidance of Coach Vince Lombardi, he ran the NFL Draft for the Green Bay Packers. He was also involved locally, working for the borough overseeing the Madison Recreation Department for many years. Retired from coaching in '81 with a record of 177, 50, and 4, but remained active with Madison High School Football Program the rest of his life. He and his wife retired in 1999, and in 2007, the Board of Education named Madison High School Football Stadium in his honor, Ted Monica Stadium at Twombly Field. He was predeceased by his wife, Lee Bird. In 2011, he is survived by his four children, Mark, Patty, Bob, and Ted Jr., and eight cherished grandchildren. Let us take a moment to remember Coach Ted Monica and to recognize his immediate family and expanded family of hundreds of players from over the years. Thank you. We have no minutes for approval today. A couple of things to report, and then we have a proclamation to present, which is why we had our Girl Scouts lead today. And I was just talking to a couple of scouts who were here a couple of years ago, more than a couple of years ago, to learn about local government. And last week, I had Cub Scout Pack 226 here to take a tour and learn about local government. And what we do is a mock council meeting. They proposed an ordinance that would have banned homework in Madison. But after resident input, which included the mother of one of the scouts, they compromised and revised the ordinance to limiting homework to 30 minutes. But just for all the students in the audience, that law cannot take effect, I'm sorry. On a more serious note, I want to talk a little bit about the coronavirus. Last Wednesday, I held a meeting and discussed the borough's response to COVID-19. Attending the meeting were department heads, including our health officer, Mike Fitzpatrick, Nurse Marlene Dolan. Also attending were representatives for the school district, St. Vincent's, Drew University, and the Madison Area YMCA. The goal was to make sure we all had the most up-to-date and consistent information. And at this point, there are 11 reported cases in New Jersey, which is double, nearly double from yesterday, and includes a case as close as Berkeley Heights. And Governor Murphy has declared a state of emergency, our first statewide health emergency ever declared. As was shared last week, we know it is highly contagious, but 80% of the cases are mild, which is good news but a challenge, because someone could be a carrier without even knowing it. We also know that very few children have shown symptoms, but that doesn't mean they're not getting it and passing it on to others. It's very important to know that the seniors and infirm are the most vulnerable, so please take precautions when visiting, and make sure they have the support and we all check in on them. And we need to take care of ourselves by washing our hands, limiting our contact, and avoiding large crowds. And if you get sick, stay home. And if you are showing symptoms, please make sure it gets reported. Before I go to the rest of my comments, I asked our Administrator Ray Cody to add anything that I might not have covered.
Well, sure. Well, Mayor, we have the most current information is updated on a regular basis by Michael Palencia on the Borough website, which is rosenet.org. So if you go to that, you can track along and follow the latest advisories from the CDC and from the Madison Board of Health. And we just want to reinforce that the governing body obviously is taking this very seriously. And our first responders, which are the police, fire, and ambulance, are prepared and ready to respond in the event of an outbreak of the virus in Madison. They are routinely trained and complete frequent emergency response drills of this nature. So this is something that they're ready for, and they study for and practice. And in communication with the Morris County Office of Emergency Management and local area hospitals, we have ample volunteers and first responders are ready and prepared to assist in the event of an emergency. So at this point, we're recommending caution and safe health practices. We do have a top-notch health department, and on a daily basis, they're interacting with all the schools, Drew University, the YMCA, large area employers, just sharing best practices in terms of how to prevent the spread of this illness. And as the mayor said, we have no reported confirmed cases in Madison or Morris County. So right now, we're doing okay. We would want to reinforce that, as employers may need to do, take certain actions, the borough will try to maintain normal hours, because we're like the employer of last resort, and there are services that you just can't stop providing for police and fire and health and those services. So we will maintain normal business hours, and we'll work around whatever the restrictions are we have to, but we're prepared to work remotely if we have to, and we'd encourage and will put guidance up online about how residents can still participate with the borough government, even if it's done electronically, if that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to announce the employee for the month of March. Linda Sawyer, our purchasing personnel director. For her competently and efficiently handling her many duties as qualified purchasing agent while consistently saving the borough money, and for maintaining an open-door policy as our personnel director and promptly answering questions and personal issues for all borough employees, it's so important to have that support in her work to save us money through the purchasing agent. That's the good news is, the bad news is, she is retiring this spring, so we will certainly miss her dedication and expertise for many years working for the borough. And our anniversary for the month of March, Lieutenant Brian Tappin of the Fire Department is celebrating 20th, 20th, rather, 20th anniversary on March 6th, just celebrated. So if you see him, please congratulate him. And now, I'm going to come down and present a proclamation. You're all coming. All right, this is a proclamation for Girl Scout Day, March 12th, 2020. Whereas Girl Scout Day commemorates the day in 1912 when Juliette Gordon, Juliette Gordon Low founded the first-ever Girl Scout troop meeting in Savannah, Georgia with 18 girl members. And whereas March 12th is also known as the birthday of Girl Scouts. And whereas in addition to organizing their first Girl Scout troop, Juliette Gordon Low also organized enrichment programs, service projects, outdoor activities, and adventures for this troop. And whereas originally named Girl Guides of America, the Girl Scouts have grown to over 3 million members, building girls, building girls of courage, confidence, and character who become responsible citizens and make the world a better place. Whereas Girl Scouting has always been an organization run by women, for women, and it has been estimated that since its inception, 50 million girls and women have been members of this organization. And whereas the Madison Harding Service Unit, the Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey, is proud to have a total of 44 troops in kindergarten through 12th grade, consisting of 527 girls with approximately 90 leaders. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim March 12th, 2020 as Girl Scout Day and extends thanks and appreciation to the Girl Scouts for their service to our community. One of our leaders want to say a few words, if you want?
Thank you, Mayor. We just want to thank you for having us here. We feel so honored, and we're happy to contribute to our beautiful town of Madison in any way we can. Thank you.
And I understand you have a little gift for our councilman. Oh, boy. Hey, Liz, get ready. Let it be noted that this is not an exchange of a buck, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Exactly.
How nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That's so nice of you. Thanks. And thank you for leading our, thank you for leading our pledge. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, and enjoy your scouting.
We have going home with it.
The newest cookies.
Newest cookies.
Thank you very much. All right, move on to reports from committees. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Right, I'll first start with Planning Board. The Planning Board last week approved the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Element of the Master Plan, and this helps the Open Space Committee to obtain grants and gives us guidance on the issues of open space recreation and historic preservation. From the Police Department, and you can see it online too, if you want to read the report, from the Police Department, on Wednesday, March 4th, 2020, Sergeant Lisa Esposito officially retired from Madison Police Department. She was appointed as badge number 116 on July 17th, 1995. She began her career following her graduation from the Morris County Police Academy. And she comes from a long line of law enforcement officers. Her brother Mark is a retired captain for the Morris County Sheriff's Office. Her grandfather, Joseph Chirulanzo, was the chief of the Madison Auxiliary Police for over 50 years. Her father, Peter, was a special officer with the Madison Police Department. And after being promoted to sergeant in 2016, she was reassigned to the Patrol Division as a patrol supervisor in Squad B. During her career, she was instrumental in starting several community service projects like the Senior Snow Shoveling Program, Ride Safe Bicycle Helmet Program, and Project Lifesaver. A passionate DARE officer for many years, Lisa also served as the department DARE coordinator for the past six years. Sergeant Esposito has the distinct honor of being the first woman to hold the rank of sergeant in the history of our agency. And Madison thanks Lisa for her dedication and service to our Police Department and our community. She served for 25 years. Also, this week, Patrol Officer Jerry Mantone has successfully completed his probationary term with the Police Department, and he's done a great job and is being signed to the Patrol Division. And on March 2nd, 2020, Detective Ken Shannon conducted a drug awareness presentation at the Madison Elks Club. This presentation outlined the current trends being seen in our area and around the state. And then from the Fire Department, they, during the month of February, they responded to 17 general alarms, 16 steel alarms, 15 investigations, 25 EMS calls, 56 fire prevention inspections were performed, intense smoke, resale inspections were done. And on March 3rd, we also supplied mutual aid to cedar noles. And the Fire Department, Police Department, and Ambulance Squad are all monitoring the coronavirus and have plans in place to deal with a response to such a call that will best protect our first responders while dealing with a suspected infected patient. These response procedures are based on the CDC guidelines for first responders. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And with Public Works Engineering and also for Finance, Borough Clerk for Carmella Vitale, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you. From Public Works and Engineering, the Highland Avenue water main is being replaced. And we had a beautiful day, 70-degree weather, and I hope everyone was out in the backyard doing their spring cleanup, because we are now picking up lawn waste along with recycling and garbage. From the Finance Department, the 2020 municipal budget will be introduced at the March 30th council meeting, with a public hearing slated for April 27th. It provides for a 2% tax increase, a $2 million electric dividend, full funding of all municipal services, some extra staffing for DPW and police to fill vacancies, a targeted electric rebate of $200 for income-eligible customers, $200,000 for new clean energy initiatives such as electric charging stations and community solar, and over $7.5 million in capital investments. Residents are reminded that the filing deadline for tax appeals is April 1st. Forms are available online and in the Clerk's and Tax Assessor's office. Targeted electric rebate forms are available online and in the Utility Department and Clerk's office. The filing deadline is December 1st. And from the Clerk's office, in anticipation of the June 2nd primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for county committee member as well as municipal office is March 30th, 2020. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's office. Voter registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are also available in the Borough Clerk's office or online at morriselections.org. The deadline for new voter registration before the June primary is May 12th. As a reminder, pet licenses were due before February 29th. There's a $15 annual fee, plus a $10 late fee, and up-to-date rabies vaccine info are required to obtain a license. Please call the Clerk's office for more information. And then all elected and appointed Borough officials are required to file an annual financial disclosure statement with the state of New Jersey before April 30th. Each information regarding filing will be emailed to all required to file. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Director of Business Development and Downtown Development Commission, Mayday in Madison is scheduled for Saturday, May 2nd. Donation envelopes will be included in the March utility bills. The t-shirt art contest information will be distributed to the schools this week. The Madison Farmers Market will return on Thursdays, beginning May 21st, and run through November 19th. The market is relocating to the east end, Greenwood Avenue of Dodge Field. The hours will remain the same from 2:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon to 7:00 p.m. Planning for the DDC, a sponsored Rose City Summer Fest event is underway. It will be held from noon to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 30th. From the Chamber of Commerce, The Taste of Madison is Monday, March 23rd, at Brook Lake Country Club. Tickets are currently on sale at tastefmadison.org or at Gary's Wine and Marketplace. The Easter Fun Fest is Saturday, April 4th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. downtown. The Madison Community Arts Center, the pre-summer concert series is slated to open on Friday, May 1st, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. outside on the outdoor stage of the art center. Other concerts will be held on May 15th, May 29th, and June 12th. Discussions have begun with the Folk Project about producing concerts at the junior school with dates October 4th, November 1st, and December 6th. Madison Arts and Cultural Annual Fundraiser will be Saturday, September 19th, date pending approval by the school district. And the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, there's been an extraordinary amount of activity at the M E T C the last few months. In December 2019, mold was discovered in the building's lower level, which affects public areas of the museum, as well as the artifact collections room. Working closely with the borough, the museum has contracted a firm to conduct a remediation scheduled for early April. For nearly five years, the Board of Trustees and staff have been developing several long-term strategic initiatives to create a sustainable future, including some options such as relocating the entire museum, moving the collection, adding on to the building, and moving the education programming. The museum will expand all educational programming, including workshops, school field trips, lectures, and other events to 23 Main Street, former site of Short Stories. At the same time, the staff will be temporarily relocate part of the collection to clear the lower-level area as they conduct the mold remediation. The plan going forward after remediation will be to design and create a new visible storage collection facility on-site. At the same time, the ongoing historic renovation and restoration project continues, and the museum is working with Morris County Historic Preservation Trust and Madison Open Space to provide funding for this activity to preserve owner of Madison's most iconic buildings. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
The plastic bag ordinance is going well with random stops in stores. There seems to be reasonable compliance so far, and interest by vendors and merchants to comply with the intent of the ordinance. As the mayor talked about already, but I'm going to add to it, COVID-19 coronavirus is being consistently monitored by the Madison Department through observation and review of state and CDC input and local health collaboration with the County Office of Health Management. There are currently no confirmed cases in New Jersey. There are 11 presumed cases. Over 25 investigations have been performed and have turned up negative. Simple steps that you can take to prevent the spread of the flu and common cold will also help prevent COVID-19. Wash your hands often with soap and warm water. If soap and warm water are not available, then use hand sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, or mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Stay home while you are sick and avoid contact with others. Cover your mouth and nose with a tissue or sleeve when coughing or sneezing. Routinely clean frequently touched surfaces. In addition, practice social distancing of six feet when in crowded areas. This is not a, this is not a time to panic, but a time for preparation. We ask that you do your part to help keep Madison safe and healthy. Please share only facts, not fear, and refer to credible sources like the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the World Health Organization, the New Jersey Department of Health, or Rosenet to obtain updated information on COVID-19. Information from these organizations can easily be found on our COVID-19 update page at www.rosenet.org. The Council Administration Health Department and Office of Emergency Management would like to emphasize that this is an emerging, rapidly evolving situation, but we remain vigilant in providing updated information and guidance as it becomes available. The safety of all residents is our highest priority, and we assure you that we stand ready to respond should COVID-19 appear in Madison. For the latest information, visit www.rosenet.org/1250/coronavirus-updates. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Utilities, Ms. Arlick.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department reports that there were no emergency call-outs during the last two weeks. During this time, the department made continued progress on utility pole transfers and replacements, including from storm and tornado damage. The Electric Department also assisted with the installation of their first four smart meter gatekeepers last week. These units are the collectors that automatically read the advanced electric meters and water modules that have been installed by our electric and water departments. Three of these gatekeeper units transmit the collected data via the borough's fiber network, and one communicates via cellular network. Together, they can read all of the 2,500-plus electric smart meters and 500-or-so water meter modules that have been installed. As our meter readers decrease their time spent driving around reading meters, they can spend more time installing new smart meters, which will speed up full deployment in the borough. This, in turn, will move us closer to rolling out a new electric rate structure with advanced capabilities to help customers cut their electric costs and reduce their carbon footprint. Special thanks to Electric Department head Jim Matina and his crew for their help in installing the new gatekeepers and helping us take this critical next step in the deployment of our advanced metering infrastructure. Thanks also to Chief Lou DeRosa, Russ Brown, Jim Sanderson, and Jim Trimble for their help in reaching this important milestone for our utilities. From the Water Department, the department installed a new 1.5-inch water service to a newly subdivided property on Woodland Road, and provisions have been made at the new dog park for the installation of a new barrier-free water fountain and bottle filler with a dog bowl. As with the Electric Department, installation of smart meter water modules is ongoing. That's all for tonight.
Very much. Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor, Council received an email dated February 28th from Resident Victoria Elman on Elm Street regarding the electric dividend.
Thank you. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited normally to our agenda discussions, which are our none, so you may comment on any of the resolutions. I will go through these resolutions, so you are aware of them, and you'll understand what's in the consent agenda later on. If you want to comment on anything else besides these resolutions, that time will be coming up very shortly, so stay tuned. Resolution 92 is resolution rejecting all bids for the Madison Police Firearms Training Facility and authorizing a rebid. All the bids were substantially exceeded the cost estimate for the project. Resolution 93 is requesting that Governor Phil Murphy, to Governor Phil Murphy, to preserve day-top mendham adolescent substance abuse treatment center. It's been a very important program for those youth and young adults fighting drug addiction. Resolution 94 is requesting to the freeholders to reduce the posted speed limit on Greenville Road from 35 to 30. This is with respect to the fact that it is a winding, somewhat winding road, and with two schools and many residents along that road. Resolution 95 is authorizing a change fund for the Borough Clerk's office, so they can make change for cash payments. This fund will be $50. Resolution 96 is authorizing a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. Resolution 97 is authorizing a 2020 grant application by the Madison Free Public Library pursuant to the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act. This, the estimated project cost is basically $2.9 million, with the application for the grant is $1.47 million, with the borough would provide $900,000 from General Capital and the library contributing additional $540,000 for the matching grant. Resolution 98 is approving raffle license for the PTSO Madison High School. So you can comment on any of those resolutions. If you wish to comment, please step forward, say your name, your address, and the resolution you are speaking about. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Again, as mentioned, our agenda discussions, will the clerk please read the statement for ordinances for hearing?
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on February 24th, 2020. All was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public testing scene.
All right, before I call up our first hearing, I just want to let you know that this ordinance will be tabled, but we will have the hearing, and a new ordinance, Ordinance Nine, will be introduced. We'll explain that when we get to the introduction. So I call up Ordinance 6, 2020, for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, establishing Chapter 190.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing Chapter 195-36.1 of the Madison Land Development Ordinance entitled Solar Energy Systems.
I open the hearing. Anyone wish to comment on Ordinance 6, which will be tabled, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. Can I have a motion to table this ordinance?
Mayor, I move to table Ordinance 6-2020.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that number will be retired. And now we're on to our second of invitations for discussion. This is now when residents can comment on any topic. Please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace and close you off at four minutes. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. We'll have a hearing date set for March 30th, 2020. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 7, 2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 15 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Downtown Development Commission.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 7-2020.
Second.
And this is part of our committee-on-committees work and also making it the bylaws and the ordinance consistent. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Arlick?
Yes.
Ordinance 8, 2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $300,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a street sweeper and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 8-2020.
Second.
And typically, we hold off on capital ordinances until the budget has been formally adopted, but as with roads, we do early to get ahead of the bids, and this is a very long lead item, and so we want to get it up and operational while the other one is still working. Working, yes. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Arlick?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 9, 2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing Chapter 195-36.1 of the Madison Land Development Ordinance entitled Solar Energy Systems.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 9-2020.
Second.
And as mentioned, this is replacing Ordinance 6, 2020, and the main thing is to, we are in the process of working for community solar. We want to make sure that that is, can happen in Madison where residents that may not be able to do solar in their own homes or an apartment can be part of a solar complex. Other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just give some context for this ordinance, which is the same for the one that was tabled, so this is really a general statement about the purpose and the nature of this ordinance. It establishes land use rules for where and how solar photovoltaic panels can be installed on residential and commercial property. So the purpose of the ordinance is to regulate how the panels look, how they can be mounted, and so forth. This ordinance was the product of a lot of review and research, a lot of analysis, comparison, considerable professional expertise, and it was reviewed by members of the Madison Environmental Commission, who provided detailed comments on the draft ordinance. I was proud to contribute to this effort as a member of the Land Use Committee together with my colleague Astri, and I think this is an ordinance that reflects a lot of hard work and deliberation, and I'm excited to move this ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Excellent background. Any other, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R. 92 through R. 98.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
Current fund, $436,480.45. The General Capital Fund, $327,087.71. The Electric Operating Fund, $130,730.17. Water Operating Fund, $24,907.78. Water Capital Fund, $51,859.82. And for the trust, $19,039.41. Total is $990,105.34.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Arlick?
Yes.
A new business. I'd like to make the following appointments, requesting Council confirmation. This is just, these two positions were appointed by title, but just want to put the names to the positions. So the Local Emergency Planning Council, Sarah Fisher, is a Board of Education rep, one-year term through December 31st, 2020. Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, Steve Tindell, Board of Education rep, one-year term through December 31st, 2020.
Motion to confirm?
Yes.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Before one other new business, as a reminder that we are not meeting on the fourth Monday this month, we will be meeting on March 30th, so please adjust your calendars accordingly, not 23rd, but on the 30th. That's, people can attend the Taste of Madison, and we'll have the introduction of the budget at that meeting, so we'll have the extra time to get everything prepared. And with that...
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. We'll catch up after a couple of longer meetings, so... Thank you.
Thank you.